The August 12th meeting 2024 regular meeting to the for the Public Safety Commission.
Chair Cervantes?
Present.
Vice Chair Munoz?
Present.
Commissioner Donnelly?
Present.
Commissioner G?
Present.
Commissioner Holguin?
Present.
Commissioner Liu?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
So we we move to the presentation. Moving on to item number two on the agenda. Chief Sensi will do a presentation on South Pasadena Community Emergency Response Training, or C E R T, CERT.
Morning, Commissioner. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Fire Department. With me I have Engineer Anthony Correia. He is our CERT coordinator, so he's going to give you guys just a brief update on the program and then advise you on our final class for 2024.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning. So I am Anthony Correia. I've been teaching the CERT program since I got hired here in about 2015. The program was developed by a former Fire Chief Riddle and retired Captain Saxon in 2014. To date, we've taught approximately 700 students. We do two classes a year. They're 15-hour courses with an annual refresher in May. Average about 20, about 20 students per class. Basic course of work is fire suppression, safety, disaster prep. First aid is a large section of it. Sorry, I'm on duty as well. I saw there's a car accident out front too, so I'm hoping they'll call us. So light search and rescue and lifting and cribbing, as well as how to move patients or victims that are trapped in their house. Our next class is going to be October 26th. It is a three-day class. We teach it on Saturdays, so everyone who still works can attend. We are always moving around holidays, so we always have a spring session and a fall session. This one's a little later than we normally do. It's usually around September. But again, the next class will start on October 26th. To all those interested, we have a CERT page on the main city's website. City's main website, I mean. There'll be a link to the registration site from there, and students can register there. The class is free. We teach it here in the fire station, and I believe that's it. Do you, anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Yes, would you consider doing a CERT class for our younger students, meaning high school and below?
We can. We have just previously run into liability issues with some of the, I don't want to say dangerous things we do, but we do like a live-fire training exercise where they will put out a controlled fire with a fire extinguisher. And due to liability reasons, we haven't been having minors, people under 18, do that portion of it. But typically, we will let people under 18, as long as they're accompanied by an adult, attend the class. We just, they can't do most of the hands-on stuff, unfortunately.
Would you, would it be condensed one day, or is it still the three days for minors?
To date, we've just had them attend the classroom portion of the full adult one. We don't have a full separate curriculum for teen CERT yet. There actually is a teen CERT program through FEMA that we haven't adopted yet.
What age are the teens CERT?
I actually don't know, to be honest with you. I believe it's 12 to 17, but I'm not 100% sure.
If you could get back to me on that, so that I?
Sure.
May I mention it to people who might be interested?
Okay. And we've offered to some groups, such as school groups or church groups, to host like a mini class for them if they have a large enough group. But when they're smaller groups, we typically recommend they just come to the main class that we teach here.
I'll talk to you offline.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, hi. Good morning. Appreciate the presentation and the great work on this great program. Thank you. Are there any for people who are interested in potentially attending? You mentioned some of the more non-classroom things that you guys do. Any particular physical limits or anything that people should be concerned about or know going in? They're going to have to lift heavy objects or anything like that?
As far as the main class?
Yes.
We will work around any handicaps or anything like that. It's relatively lightweight stuff. We will pick up, we will practice picking up me or a mannequin. It can be up to 200 pounds, but we do it with six to eight people. And if anyone has any back problems, knee problems, anything like that, we typically do get older participants that we will work around now. We don't want to injure anybody. But we like to teach them the skills in case they have to use it in a disaster and they're by themselves or only have, you know, one other person to help them, so we'll work around that.
Great, thank you.
I don't let anyone get injured.
It would be a good place if they were. You'd be right there to help, but it sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm moving on to on to item number three on the agenda. Minutes of the Public Safety Commission regular meeting.
Chair Cervantes?
13.
We'll have to table this item because there's an error in the minutes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to the next. Okay, fine. Moving on to item number four, discussion on catalytic converter and copper theft protective tech. Chief Solinsky or, yeah, Chief Solinsky, will you present this item, please?
Good morning, Commissioner. Brian Solinsky, Chief of Police. This item is brought before you at the request of some of the commissioners. If you've been watching the news or reading newspapers lately, catalytic converter thefts over a number of years, and more recently, copper wire thefts specifically with junction boxes and lighting standards, commercial lighting standards, has been in the news quite substantially. Most recently, the Los Angeles Police Department, their Heavy Metal Theft Task Force arrested 82 individuals, I believe with over 2,000 pounds of copper wiring. And unfortunately, South Pasadena is not immune from either of those crimes, although they're very closely related because a lot of the criminals, what they're doing is they're stealing the copper wire or the catalytic converters, as I mentioned, for their precious metals. Those vary on the market, but can be quite substantial, not only in cost, but in profits for those criminals. And each of those thefts only takes, you know, a few minutes at best to commit. So to present more on this item, we wrote a staff report, which you all have in your packet, but also I want to present Detective Carlos Petch. He'll be talking a little bit on the crimes in and of themselves, and then preventative methods, and then we'll take any questions if you have any afterwards. Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Petch. I'm a detective with the South Pasadena Police Department. I've been a detective in the Bureau for the last two years, going on to my third. Catalytic converters have been on the rise since 2020. After the pandemic, we did see a lot of thefts occurring with catalytic converters just because of the precious metals that are involved in the catalytic converter itself. With the copper wiring as well, it's easy to steal. You don't have to be a, you know, a scientist to extract these precious metals or the catalytic converters. Basically, you can just get a reciprocating saw, go underneath the vehicle. I mean, we have on video that you can take no more than a minute and a half to extract one of these catalytic converters. So it's fast, it's easy to get, and what they're doing is they're taking these to recycling metal recyclers, and then they sell it for $50 to $250 each. And then what the recyclers do, they extract those precious metals, and then they resell it or they melt it down and utilize it that way. When it comes to convictions for these type of people, it makes it very difficult if it's not, because these items are not serialized. So when they're not serialized, we can't place it to a victim unless it is. But we recommend to have these items engraved or etched with either a VIN number of the vehicle or painting them to a certain color to say that this is mine. But what ends up happening when we do get an arrest for a suspect of catalytic converter theft? One, we have to find a victim. So once we're able to place a victim, a lot of times when we do have these arrests, it's because a neighbor called saying, hey, I heard loud cutting sounds, and the officers respond, get there within a minute and a half, and then they locate these people in the general area. We ask the people that heard where this was coming from, and then we go and inspect the vehicle to see if there was any catalytic converter that was stolen. If we can put that person or place that catalytic converter to that vehicle, then we can arrest them on that. But possession of a catalytic converter just in itself, without any kind of serialization, makes it very difficult to prosecute or to charge that person with that theft. We don't need a certain amount of numbers to charge them or get a conviction for catalytic converter theft. A lot of times, these catalytic converter thefts is considered a grand theft. It's just, the issue is with getting conviction is placing a victim for that product, especially with loose copper wirings and stuff like that. It makes it very difficult to find a victim for that unless we can attach it to a property or we know that it came from this area. A lot of times, we recommend, like you said, for catalytic converters, to have VINs etched in them, painted for the copper wiring. If it's going to be at a construction site, have them locked up to the best of the ability of the contractors or wherever it's going to be located. Any questions in regards to?
Yes. You know, what happens with catalytic converters is the fact that, true, it might not amount to much as far as the value of the item according to the DA. However, it is such a terrible, terrible inconvenience, and not only inconvenience, but actually it could create such a heartache and headache, especially for senior citizens that drive older cars. And once you take that catalytic converter of their older car, of course, they're going to tell them, oh, just get a new one. But, you know, for a senior citizen to be thinking in terms of $30,000 or $40,000, which is what the price of the cars run right now, is a huge, huge loss. So to me, I watched something on TV where this gentleman that is going around the country stating the fact that the theft of a catalytic converter, if anybody is caught with more than one catalytic converter in their car, and I mean the one that the car has that they are driving, they should be arrested and they should be prosecuted. Because it is, you know, for people to think, oh, it's just a catalytic converter. But it's not just a catalytic. They at end the lives of these senior citizens, and this is so wrong. We need to protect them. And the second point I want to make is I brought this to Chief Solinsky, is the fact that the thieves now are hitting on the charging stations. They found charging stations for the EVs, and they found like some people were going to Arizona, and when they got to the border in California, they had stolen all the wiring so they couldn't charge their cars. So, and of course, that's so easy for them because those charging stations are not manned. There is no one watching them. There is no one looking. So, I mean, it's just set for them to come and take it. So what I was asking the chief is, we are getting some in South Pasadena, we're getting some charging stations. I know that it would take a real daring person to try to steal right in front of the police station. And I mean, that would be the optimum. These people should be thrown in jail on the spot. But what about when we start putting charging stations on around the city and these are unmanned? So I was thinking, what if we take preventive measures on how these stations are that we can keep an eye, that there's something that will say, no, you do not have a free hand here to take whatever you feel like and mess up the lives of so many people, especially here in South Pasadena, that we have so many EV owners. So that's my point.
So to address the the location of the charging, charging stations, there was a discussion that council had previously of where we were going to put some of the charging stations. One thought was down at a Royal Park, and that was quickly, you know, changed. Part of it because of the safety, not only the safety of those that are charging, but also the safety of the equipment. So right now, we don't have any charging infrastructure in South Pasadena that's open to the public, other than here around the Police Department, which I don't think you can get a much safer location than that. But the second one that's coming in is down at one of the grocery stores on Barocks, another really popular place. The nice thing about that is because it is so heavily traveled, it's well-lighted, a lot of people coming and going, so that the opportunity for an individual to commit a crime like that is probably significantly reduced. So that would be my recommendation, is any thoughts of putting in any other charging stations, that they be in areas that are well-traveled, well-lighted, lots of people coming ingress egress, that just prevents others from taking that crime of opportunity. One of the challenges with with wire theft is there's really no way to, you know, there's lock boxes and, you know, electrical junctions typically have lock boxes on them or some sort of cover. But with tools these days and just a few minutes, thieves that really want that can cut right through those locks or cut through those boxes. And it only takes a few seconds to pull that wiring up. One thing I would caution the thieves is you don't know what that wiring is capable of doing in terms of high electrical charges. And there certainly have been thieves that have been injured and even killed taking that copper wiring. So it's something for them to consider as well. And I will say back on the catalytic converter thefts, kind of the same thing. It takes just moments to steal those things. But we've had even thieves in South Pasadena crawl under a car and not realize that an owner is coming out who gets in their car and drives away and has driven over them. So there's potential consequences to those actions legally and of course physically. I would caution any resident from approaching anybody that's committing crimes like that to call the Police Department because you never know what the intention of those thieves are. And what we're seeing now is a lot of the catalytic converter thieves, they're going out with crews, multiple people. They're in and out, but they're also armed. We're coming across a lot of those individuals that are armed now. One thing that is significant with catalytic converter thefts is the crime is actually starting to reduce. We had a real large spike during the pandemic. Part of that was the supply chain. So rhodium, I think at that time, was about $16,000 an ounce. Now it's down to about $4,000 an ounce, and that's simply due to the supply chain. Same with, same with the other palladium and the other metals that are involved in it. So the cost is going down. One thing I want to mention is this is a nationwide problem. California certainly recognizes that, and they've created a number of laws that are really not so much focused on the individual thieves, but now focusing on the recyclers and what their responsibilities are. One of the challenges has been to enforce those laws with the recyclers is the funding for it, and it really takes a large team. So what we see is a lot of the larger agencies or areas with recyclers, Los Angeles, Long Beach, a lot of areas down by the port, those type of industrial areas, have developed teams that'll go out there. So as I mentioned, the Highway Patrol has one, LAPD has one, I think Long Beach PD and the Sheriff's do. Other than that, I'm not very familiar with any other agencies that I know of that have their own metal recycling task force. The state has tried to create a larger task force, and there's been some funding issues with that. So recyclers are supposed to, in a perfect world, they're supposed to get the name, address, fingerprint, and a photo of anybody that's selling these metals, just to keep on record. It doesn't always happen, and then even the best of the recyclers, you know, they're having trouble keeping up with those responsibilities. But certainly, if you have a recycler that's shady and not on the up and up, you know, it's nothing for them to take in that metal and then not report it. Then it becomes much more of a problem. But the best prevention is just that, it's prevention. So for catalytic converters, we always, as Detective Petch mentioned, we encourage our residents to get their catalytic converter etched with either a ID number of their car or a phone number to their, to their personal cellphone or something of that nature, so that if we do find it with someone that shouldn't have it, then we can call and verify that it's stolen. The law in and of itself, the theft of catalytic converter, it's a specific intent crime, which means we have to show the intent of the suspect to possess a stolen piece of property and/or to have stolen it. That's the challenge for us, and that's a state law, is to, for us to show that intent. So if if someone's in possession of a catalytic converter and we can't show that they know it's stolen or that they intended to steal it, it's really a challenge for us. And oftentimes, what we'll do is we'll seize that property and have them come back. If they can show that they legally possess it with paperwork or some sort of receipt, we have to give it back to them. We haven't had one of those yet, but that's also different than filing the criminal charges with the District Attorney's office. So a lot of times, we catch these individuals, they have maybe four or five catalytic converters with them, and the District Attorney will not charge them with theft because we can't show where those vehicles came from. So that's a challenge all law enforcement is dealing with. Having said that, along with the etch program, South Pasadena does an etch program. I know a lot of agencies around here do it. We sell out every time we do it. We don't charge you, but we do take reservations, and we try to get about 20 in for a day. It's an all-day process. We try to partner with some of our local automobile garages and facilities. They have the lifts, so our detectives can go up there and do it, and we've sold out every time. I think we have another one coming out. We haven't picked a date yet, and I'll announce that when we do. But sometime in the fall, we try to do it three to four times a year. But certainly, some of the other agencies around here, if you're able to get one, and anybody that's listening, I would recommend that you do something like that. There's also external devices that you can put on around your catalytic converter. I think one is called, and I'm not endorsing any of them, but one is called the cat cage, and it's a, it's a metal shield that goes around the catalytic converter. It's welded on. And it doesn't stop a thief from stealing it. It just adds additional time, and it's an additional deterrent because it does take some extra effort to get through that with a saw. So those are the kind of things that we recommend. As for the wire theft, as we just mentioned, a lot of wire theft comes from construction sites. So we're fortunate in South Pasadena, we just don't have the big construction sites here. But but even residential sites get burglarized here, and a lot of times, it can be prevented just by locking things up. Doesn't stop it 100% of the time, but it's just that extra deterrent. Unfortunately, the city's been a victim of wire theft from some of our lighting standards. And what I say to that is, it goes back to our slogan, if you see something, say something. So if you see something unusual or people standing around electrical junction boxes, and these are, these are the big Southern California Edison boxes that we're talking about. Those are typically the ones or those commercial lighting standards that have the most wire, is if you see someone around there and it's dark or it's late at night, and you just get that feeling that they may be up to no good, we encourage you, please call the police, because if we don't see it, if we don't know about it, we're not going to know. We're always out and about looking for these type of things, but you, as the liaisons for the Public Safety Commission and in our community, you guys are our eyes and ears, you're a force multiplier. So if you see something, please let us know. And with that, happy to take any other questions that you may have. Yes, ma'am.
So with the catalytic converter etching, I just had a few questions. Marketing-wise, I only saw one Facebook ad during last year's fall etching. I didn't see any other. It's probably was on the website, but so I wanted to ask about whether you could do more marketing. Are all residents from all surrounding areas able to take advantage of the program, or is it just South Pass residents? And have we considered putting in the web-based program? I don't remember what it was called, but where these thefts are taking place so that we can maybe put more security in those areas in the future?
Sure. So a couple of things. We're really trying as a city, and this is something the entire city struggles on. As you talk about marketing, it's really getting the message out to the community. And what we're finding is between all the different social media platforms, between the city blog, our websites, we're still having a trouble reaching the community, and it's not just on this. You know, whether it's a community forum on the height issues that are going on today, or the ballot measures or crime, is that we're missing a demographic, whatever that demographic is, of our community. So we're trying really to come out with the best way to notify our community. We haven't, obviously, we haven't inked that. We haven't found that best solution. One challenge we have is just even with the age demographics, sometimes we put it out on Facebook. Then we have younger people that say, well, I don't use Facebook, I use Twitter. It becomes very challenging. What we did talk about at one of the most recent council meetings is going back to maybe even a quarterly newsletter, the actual paper mailers. Those are a little more cost prohibitive, but it's something where we want to try, just so we can get the message out because we're finding the community just isn't getting the information. But to your point, we put it out typically, anything that the Police Department does on any of our, we do Facebook, we do Twitter, we do Instagram, all our social media platforms on this. We also put it out to this, on the city blog. One challenge we have is because we're so limited with just 20 spots, we typically try to keep it to South Pass residents. That's not to say the other agencies don't offer it. I have seen the Sheriff's Department offer it to anybody. We just don't have the resources. We're limited by the time of day. It takes a few minutes to get the card. And like I said, we sell out pretty quick. I want to say the last time we sold out, I say sell out, we booked up in two days. So it also becomes a challenge. But yeah, that's something we'll certainly address. In terms of crimes and where they're located, we put it out on our monthly crime, we have a crime analyst that puts out a monthly crime map of where crimes are occurring. If you're not getting it, please let me know so that I can make sure you get one. That goes out to, we have over 70 neighborhood watch groups, and it also is on our website. And it highlights not just catalytic converters, but any crimes that occur within South Pasadena. It's a pin map, basically. And it shows the city, and we put areas of concern, you know, here was a car burglary, here was a theft and vice versa. So the residents get a good idea where these crimes are occurring.
I just thought it would be, you know, if we have the capability to use that program that we talked about last year, that it would be nice to consolidate all that information and see how our numbers compare with surrounding cities. And then we can use that data to see if we need more police force. They like our numbers of catalytic converter thefts are a lot greater than surrounding cities, and we can make a case for we need more, we need more money, our police force.
So what we're going to be doing shortly here, and it was, it was on the work plan, unfortunately, as we all know, we've had some changes, some staffing leaving, some new staffing coming on, was the 2023 annual report. That'll come next month. What we do is we call it the Part One Crimes, or there are crime stats, really. We switched format. It used to be UCR, now it's Nibers. The difference is Nibers, which you will see, is much more comprehensive, and that's actually what we use. So instead of just comparing catalytic converters, we will use all the crimes and compare them to neighboring cities. And I'll present that next month to this commission and to the, to the city council as well, and that'll give the overview of 2023. For some reason, 2020 with COVID, we got discombobulated in terms of the city, and our staff reports and the annual reports got pushed back several months, so we're trying to catch up. So you will see 2023, and then our goal is 2024 will come out right after the first of the year, so we will get right back on track. But that is a great opportunity to do exactly what you're saying, is start comparing and looking at surrounding cities. See exactly where we stand with our neighboring agencies, what we could do better, create more efficiencies, and give a better, a better perspective of our community.
Last question on this topic. Do we have a city staff member that can do all the marketing in the city, not just? So then it takes it off your plate, but do we have one dedicated city staff member who's savvy with media?
Are you a social media savvy person that wants to volunteer?
Not savvy, but.
No, unfortunately, we don't have a public, most agencies or cities that are larger have a public information officer or a public information department, and they take those roles on. So that really includes, like you're saying, the mark. like you're saying, the marketing. And if you look at social media today, you really have to look at marketing. It's not just putting out information because what I've found is, and, and my daughter's in social media and marketing and she's, you know, if it's not a two to three second grab your attention, people look over it. And so that's challenging in and of itself. And even internally in the police department with a lot of our younger folks, we, we just don't have that skillset. So as a city, we're really looking at trying to consolidate our resources and find that one dynamic. And that really is not just putting stuff on social media, but it's writing press releases. It's speaking at public events. It's, it's really all encompassing. And we just have not have mastered that, that skillset. And the one person that was kind of taking that role on recently left to, to another organization where that will be her full-time job. So we're in a little bit of a rut here and we, we need to pull ourselves out and find another replacement. But like I said, if you know anybody, please, please. She charges too much.
Yeah. Chief Detective, thank you very much for the presentation and the, and the staff report. Just a couple of questions on it. Chief, you, you mentioned the difficulty proving the specific intent nature of the crime. The staff report refers to some cities that have established municipal ordinances. Although that would still, we would still need to present it to the DA without getting into, to that. Is that something that South Pass has considered a municipal ordinance on this?
Yeah, we actually looked at it and you brought up a very fascinating point. The challenge is it still needs to go to the district attorney's office. And there's some internal policies in the district attorney's office about what crimes are, are going to be filed. You know, there, there's the state crimes, right? And everyone says, okay, these are the crimes, you violate these and you'll get prosecuted. Certain district attorneys have taken it upon themselves to interpret it differently and decide whether or not they've determined whether or not they're going to file state crimes. So for instance, in Los Angeles County, certain drug crimes now are not being filed and they're being, what they call diversion and they're going to treatment facilities. There are certain crimes that we see that really affect South Pasadena in terms of quality of life, vagrancy, loitering, minor petty thefts that the district attorney's office has said, again, these are crimes that we don't feel, we don't want to, we don't want to victimize these people more. We would rather send them for treatment or provide them help. Whether you agree with that or not, it's part of a social justice initiative. The challenge always then becomes with funding. And do we have enough funding to support those types of programs? You know, drug diversion and, and rehabilitation or counseling and job placement for those that are loitering or stealing or committing petty thefts. So in and of itself, that's, that's a much, as you mentioned, a much more bigger political issue. We, what we were seeing in South Pasadena is that a lot of repeat offenders for those types of crimes. So going back to the catalytic converters and the specific city ordinance, a lot of the cities that have found success are in Orange County. So we have a different district attorney, a different, different policies. Those that are in Los Angeles County are really facing the same, same issues. One thing that certain cities have been creative and trying to get around the district attorney is creating their own city prosecutors. And, and having the city prosecutor go after it. But the challenge is you have to get the district attorney's permission to do that. And so far he has not granted permission for any of the cities to do that. So we're, we're, we're in this kind of catch 22 where we can't move forward. We can't, we're, we're just stuck with these policies.
You said he hasn't granted permission, but there are cities like Pasadena, Long Beach, LA that do have city attorneys or city prosecutors that prosecute misdemeanors as opposed to the DA, which only prosecutes felonies as, as you know. Do those cities have the ability to prosecute these misdemeanor crimes?
They do, but they were, they were grandfathered in, they had
They already had
Previously. So now we're talking about a city creating a prosecutorial staff to mitigate the circumstance, which circumvents the, the district attorney's policies and, and directives. And I'm pretty sure he's, he's aware of, of that initiative and that intent. And, and so it's my understanding, talking with my colleagues in law enforcement that have tried this, that he's been very vocal about moving forward with his agenda and not authorizing cities to do that.
Got it. Thank you.
Have you tried asking our state representatives lobbying them to get what we need, which is a city prosecutor?
Well, not necessarily getting a city prosecutor. Getting a city prosecutor is the, the easy part. It's
Permission.
Permission for them to prosecute these types of crimes. And this is a, a much bigger political issue. Yes, we've talked to our, some of our local representatives, specifically Senator Portin Tino has been part of this discussion with catalytic converter thefts. He's championed some of these bills that I mentioned in the staff report. So they're very well aware of it.
Kind of on a similar note, my, my next question was going to be, I, I see in the staff report and I was not on the, the commission at this time, but it looks like prior commissions drafted letters of support for various pieces of legislation. Some passed, some did not. I don't know, maybe this is a question for council member Braun, if the city still retains a legislative advocate up in Sacramento, if we've thought about potentially drafting or sponsoring our own piece of legislation rather than just supporting o- other pieces of legislation and not exactly to, to Commissioner G's point about lobbying to, to prosecute these crimes or to have a city prosecutor, but rather to hone in on the, on the crux of the issue that is catalytic converter theft and the specific intent nature of the crime. I don't know if the city still retains a legislative advocate or, I don't, I see you shaking your head, no. But if that's something that anybody else could take on is actually drafting the legislation, I think that, that might be something worth exploring.
So the city has a legislative platform and anytime we see something come up or there's something of interest, usually it's directed by council to staff. A lot of times staff will be in conversation with council to raise an issue, specifically catalytic converters. Council member Caciotti was championing a lot of this movement initially, including the letters that came before this commission two years ago for support. So that is something certainly we can take up.
Thank you. And kind of switching gears a little bit, there are no recycling facilities within city limits, right? They would have to take the converter elsewhere.
Correct.
Okay. And you, you did say you can seize the converter. But you cannot arrest the, the person unless you can prove this, the, the elements of the crime, right?
Correct. We, well, we typically will seize the property as we do our investigation and then require them to bring some sort of proof of ownership prior to, to releasing it. As I mentioned, I, I have not seen that yet.
Okay. And last thing for me. Commissioner G mentioned kind of the marketing aspects of it and, and you responded with the challenges which are, which are well understood. But the staff report has some really good tips, like the, the etching, and I believe there's a whole section of, of tips in the staff report. If there's any way to kind of pretty that up and put that on a flyer, I think that would be something very helpful to distribute to the community.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, detective.
Any other questions?
If, if there is no more questions, we can go on to the next item, which is item number five. City council liaison communications. Council member Braun, do you have anything that you would like to share?
I'll, I'll just be fast. Thank you all for, for putting up with me here. First of all, I want to thank the, the chief and Tony Abdallah who just left for a great press conference on the, I don't know if, if people saw it, the press on the EV vehicles, the hundred percent EV, that was a great press conference. Good job. And I think you know Chief Riddle retired and there's a retirement party coming up. What, what? September 20, I know I Venmo'd my, my reservation this weekend. So on September 21st and
Where?
It's in Glendale. Yep. Okay. We'll check on that. So
If we're invited.
I think you can crash that party. Anyway, so, so in any event, so you know, we're going to miss Paul, but thank goodness we have Chris stepping in as our acting fire chief and we are in the process of, we're finalizing, I think, I, I've not been involved, but finalizing a new fire chief. Yep. Oh, oh, did we choose one? Okay. Terrific. So that's really great news. And I know Paul, before he left, he, he's said a lot of really great things about, about him. So CERT program, glad to see that that's continuing. I was on the Public Safety Commission when that kind of started. Catalytic converters, just I had my catalytic converter stolen about six years ago. I'm an early adopter. And I didn't even report it to the police actually. But it is an issue and it was 1,700, it was going to be $1,700 to fix, but I figured my 12-year-old minivan did not need a catalytic converter. So on communication, I think that's a great issue. We have talked about at the council, putting together a quarterly newsletter. I think that's the way to go. We've been told it's about a hundred thousand dollars per. So that would have to be put in the budget. And as you know, we're in the process of trying to finalize a budget. So but, but that is something that I think you, you very wisely pointed out that we, as a city, need to figure out what that best communication is. Staffing is part of the budget issue and you know, everything's, we're, we're trying to finalize the budget and figure out where we are. So that's it. Thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six. Staff liaison communications. Chief Solinsky or Chief Sensi, do you have anything that you would like to share?
I would just like to talk a little bit about staffing. Council member Braun brought it up and Commissioner Lou had asked me the other day where we were with the police department in terms of staffing, because at, at some point we were, we were tremendously low. We are starting to see increases in our numbers. We've had a couple of police officers that have graduated from the police academy. So as of right now, we have two dispatchers that were vacant. Four police cadets. One police corporal, one police lieutenant, four police officers.
One cadets.
How, how about if I see you afterwards and I'll just give you my list? And one police sergeant. So we are looking at one, two, seven, seven sworn positions and two non-sworn and four part-time. So that gives you an idea of where we're at. For a police department with 36 sworn, having seven vacancies, you know, obviously there's some challenges there. But we are making headway, as I mentioned in several of my other reports, you know, it's not just South Pasadena. It's, it really, the nation is suffering from a lack of law enforcement, San Gabriel Valley specifically. And then of course, all of California. If there's a number of articles that have recently been out over in the LA Times and some of the other periodicals around the, the region, talking about the challenges and no one's really, really sure how to address it. You know, we're, we're looking at our, our younger folks and talking to them in high schools with the hopes of investing and, and then within a few years, maybe they're looking at going into law enforcement. We're talking to our military personnel as they get out. We're going to colleges and talking with people that are, that are going that route and maybe never thought of a career in law enforcement and trying to, trying to really appeal to the individuals that are looking to do community service and social service type jobs. There's, I think it comes back to marketing again, you know, how are we selling ourselves? And how is, not just South Pasadena, but law enforcement a, as a whole, and really telling, telling our story and all the amazing things that we do and the, the partnerships that are built with the community. So we're trying to appeal to individuals on a, in a different way. As council member Braun mentioned, we had the press conferences last week with the police department and, and the Teslas. What a tremendous and, and humongous opportunity for, for marketing. I can't tell you how many young people reached out to me because they saw it on social media and they thought it was just this wonderful thing and it got South Pasadena a lot of notoriety. So we're trying to capitalize on that. And even when we go and charge at some of the public stations, the officers will get out and they'll frequently be approached by people just because it's such a new concept and it's a great way to at least get a conversation started. So we're really taking advantage and trying to use every opportunity we can to fill our ranks with. And of course we want the right people. We want, we want, every law enforcement agency has a different culture and certainly South Pass has its own, but we want, we want someone that's representative of the community and, and the values that we have. So that becomes even more challenging when we're all fighting for the same, same candidate. So I think we need to be a little bit creative. Having said that, there's some, there's some real challenges even competing with some of our neighboring agencies. Torrance just recently offered a hundred thousand dollar signing bonus for five-year commitment. So you know, people can chase the money all the time, but really it's, we're, we're selling the city of South Pasadena and everything that's neat and unique and special about it. So I think when it comes to that, that's really what we're trying to show that the applicants is what South Pasadena offers. Not only financially, but what it offers in terms of lifestyle and, and family values. So that's all I have.
I have a, just a call. I guess it was on the whole time. Good thing I didn't say anything. I think I mentioned this before. Several months ago, I know there were budget issues. There's just a lot of issues. Every, every municipality is facing it. But I think I did mention to you or at a meeting that my wife had been a speaker at the career day at the high school. Well, April or May, I believe. And they had the booth set up and she was next to your personnel in the police department. And she said there was 30 young men and women at that booth. Just swarming the booth, asking questions. And interest. And they were all, these are all South Pass high school, young men and women. So I know maybe when the city gets through this year and gets the budget done for next year. Cause she indicated that a couple of them went to kind of her booth because she then she's a lawyer prosecutor. And they were asking about, they're not necessarily young men and women that are looking at like a four-year, but they're looking at potentially a two-year degree and if the city was, has any program to help them through school. And then a commitment at some point, and I know the department I used to work for did that. It would help them. And it was an investment and of course it, it's an expenditure to the city. But bringing those people on who went, who were born and raised or in this city who wanna, would love to be a police officer for this city. I think that the return on that investment is, is, would be amazing. And something to look forward to, but of course it also requires a cooperation of, of the school too, to help like allow your department to, to, to seek out those young men and women who would like to work for the city as, as they, as they grew up here and they, they understand how much they love the city. So that's just something to consider.
Absolutely. A hundred percent agree. There, there is nothing better than hiring someone that is from South Pasadena. They're, they're, they're invested in the city. They're invested in its wellbeing. And though typically what we find is they will be here long-term. Sergeant Abdallah, who just left is a product of that. Was, grew up in this community, went to elementary school, graduated and he is on his last year of employment in the city before he retires. He will move on with his family and kids. But there's a great example of someone who's committed based on his upbringing to South Pasadena. One program we had, the police department had, I believe it stopped the mid 90s due to staffing and we, we have the program. I'm waiting to bring it back. As you mentioned, we're just about through the budget cycle. And then as we bring on staffing is a police explorer program. And think of that as you will, like a, like a boy scout program for those individuals interested in law enforcement. Now it's a little bit different in the sense that it's, it's older kids, typically high school. And then they come to the police department and they learn skills, like they'll learn how to do traffic control. They'll help out at the front counter. Simply because it is law enforcement based, there is a little bit more risk in terms of, you know, rather than scouting. But it's very similar in nature. We teach them skills within the police department. They get to know the hierarchy, the, they start studying laws and that is a great segue for those interested in becoming law enforcement. But it's also a great segue for those individuals that maybe don't want to go into law enforcement, but just want to become better citizens and learn about their civic responsibilities. So that's one program we're looking at. But I also want to bring up at that same time and kind of going along that we're looking at a citizens on patrol program. That is typically, doesn't have to be, but it typically is retirees with some free time that go out in a police car. It's, with some free time that go out in a police car it's typically a white car so it's differentiated between an actual police car and they do community things such as they'll they'll drive by people's homes that are on vacation they will do traffic control at the scene of a collision while the officers are investigating or they will just be a visible deterrent that drives around the parking lots just so people know and see another police car so that is another program we're combining the two in the sense that we need someone to run that program so when the staffing comes something that'll be under their wheelhouse and we hope to launch those next year thank you
yeah I just wanted to give you an update on our staffing as well we're in a similar situation as PD we currently have five open positions our last recruitment netted only fourteen applications we invited all fourteen to interviews three showed up and only one passed and I was just notified that that one person actually dropped out of our process I did open another recruitment last week so fingers crossed we're gonna get some applicants but we're we're doing our best our personnel are definitely working a lot of overtime putting in a lot of extra time and it's definitely taxing on them and their families at home so we're we're doing everything we can to try and keep the wheels on the bus so to speak and try and recruit the best we can you guys have any questions on that
no
I have a quick question are you impacted by the wildfires up north or
well normally we send an engine to go participate in those but because of our staffing shortages we haven't been able to to participate at all
gotcha
normally when we're fully staffed even if we have one or two short we'll commit an engine up there and then obviously off-duty personnel will come in and staff but because of our shortages right now we haven't been able to send anything up north
yeah I have a quick comments over the weekend I talked with one of our neighbors he was a former firefighter in the city he was moved to another neighbor city because of the higher pay he mentioned to me the fire department used to be the South Pasadena fire department used to be highest paid in the neighborhood now it's underpaid that's why that's one of the reason it could be we cannot retain our good firefighters and police officers that's one of the data feedback I received
incorrect and when you know when I came here you know I was an auxiliary in nineteen ninety-four and got full time in ninety-seven we were definitely the highest paid and benefited department anywhere our pay was probably close to the high end of the average scale but our benefits were substantial I mean anybody that knew I worked here was like you guys are working for the Beverly Hills department and over the years a majority of those benefits have been taken away we've lost so we're really trying to get to a point where we can somehow negotiate these back and and really retain the people we have if we can retain we'll solve our recruiting problem
yeah just a comment and maybe again to to council member Braun we'll sound like a broken record here but we know there are budget challenges but obviously these are very important investments that need to be made and with MOU discussions also you know it's disheartening to hear as someone who is born and raised in South Pasadena lived here my whole life except for for college and law school but it is difficult to see people leaving and and if there's anything or any money we can move around these are very important matters that we need to to pump money into especially the the MOU negotiations we want the best and the brightest
yeah currently you know we had we run six personnel per day full time we're down five of those and I have one that is in backgrounds with LA City just waiting for his offer and if I lose him I'll basically be down in a tighter shift so I'll be down to twelve people to cover three reaches that's substantial
Chief when Commissioner Lou and I were were doing a ride along with your department we were informed of something and I don't quite remember the name I don't know if you do Commissioner but where there's an agreement with San Marino to send people back and forth we were we were kind of told that we're usually the donor we usually send people to San Marino and they don't particularly send very many people back is that something that is changing or can change to in the short term of course this is a this is a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound but we need we need something right
correct yeah and it's a reciprocal program so we do have a decent amount of San Marino employees that will work over in our city as well as vice versa San Marino was having some of the same challenges with staffing they were down three to four personnel they're almost fully staff minus one IOD so we will start seeing more of their personnel helping us out and that that's a good program for us to continue it does help take the strain off some of our guys that are working I mean we have guys working four or five days in a row a day off coming back working another four days and so it's definitely taxing on them and their families and a lot of these kids have a lot of these firefighters have small children at home so we're trying to do everything we can to try to get them some time at home with their family for sure
great thank you and just last thing I know I've seen you around and formally met you this morning but it just congratulations on on serving as acting chief and maybe if you those of us maybe who don't know you as well or I'm sure everybody up here does but if you could just introduce yourself
yeah I apologize really for not doing it the division chief Chris Sensi I'm interim fire chief for now I'm definitely we're part of a shared staffing a command staff so I'm actually stationed at San Marino Station ninety-one so you'll see me back and forth so I'm running operations between two cities and doing the interim fire chief role challenging but I'm having a good time
you drive you drive a San Marino vehicle right
yeah it's a it's a dual command vehicle South Pass and San Marino
okay because I saw it outside my house one time like that's a different color than ours so
yeah you'll see on the logo on the door it'll say San Marino on top and South Pass on the bottom
gotcha thank you
it's definitely battalion that covers both cities
thank you
yes what are your thoughts on Chief Solinsky's mustache
you know it could go a little lower but you know we're getting there
any other questions
no I have a suggestion I know this is not over what we cover however is very integral to what the problem we're facing and I I was thinking about bringing this up to the city council and true we might not be able to match that top paying agencies around us however what if we offer some fringe benefits and but fringe benefits I mean we are talking about having a construction of a lot of housing and I was thinking can we prioritize and see if among this housing some of them the our people in the police and fire as well as teachers get a priority in applying purchase or lease or whatever is going to happen for living in South Pasadena and they don't have to drive an hour or two to get to work make it more attractive to them I would leave it in council member Brown aside to decide how this could be best done because if we offer something that would make it attractive to them I think that might attract some people and what could make a safer city than having our members of the police department living in the community and as well as some of our our educators police and fire I mean but this is something it just crossed my mind and I wanted to mention I don't know the specifics of it or how to approach it I know I know we are just being told by the state that we need to bring all these many units on board so why not having some of those units go to some of these people that actually could benefit and the city would benefit tremendously from
I think council member Braun has heard you and and we'll take that up when it comes time for negotiating thank you
kind of on a I'm sorry I'm not sure if this is out of order Chair but on a similar note and I had conversations with with Chief Emeritus Riddle about this and I believe he was gonna pass it on to the council but with new developments and maybe the acting chief can speak to this but with new developments come new challenges especially for fire and with the new potential ordinance that's on the ballot for height restrictions I know Chief Emeritus Riddle was was trying to look into whether there was a way to put developers on the hook for example ladder company or something like that I don't know if that's was ever passed along to council or if the acting chief has any thoughts on on that or if I'm
yeah you know I've had many discussions with Chief Riddle regarding that definitely it's going to be a funding issue and where would we put the trucks so we would have to be looking at possibly building a second fire station which finding a spot and getting the infrastructure and the funding for that's going to be definitely a challenge but we do have a robust mutual aid agreement with Pasadena Alhambra so we do get the ladder trucks as needed but if we do start to build some substantially large occupancies we may need to look at potentially putting a truck company in service in the city and we could look at doing a shared staff between San Marino and San Gabriel San Gabriel has the same challenges they're definitely looking at putting a ladder truck in service so that could be something that we could look at doing a shared cost on potentially but this is something that that's on the radar that we've discussed definitely
thank you okay now moving on to item number seven commissioners communications commissioners do you have anything that you would like to share
yes I would like to go first because I have to go to work I think that I have to applaud the department for making do with the limited resources that we have and I would encourage you to look at the free resources that are out there for example the high schoolers they have a virtual enterprise class if we need to work on branding for our marketing at least they can come up with some sort of rough draft for us and they are more adept with the social media than we may be so that's one free type of thing that we could go for the second one is that we have MBA students in the community for example UCLA MBA students and University of Michigan Ross they have a Los Angeles contingency that they have LA a group that that meets in downtown LA so a lot of these MBA students need to do a capstone project it would be great if we could tap into that resource and see if any of them are willing to do like kind of preconsulting for us in terms of marketing in terms of coming up with with ways that we can recruit and and maybe save money somehow so that would be my first suggestion as a parent it's the first day of school is coming up on Wednesday we'll probably be hearing more about the crossing guard challenges that we have and my last remark is do we have a social services team that goes out to help with the social rehab of our mentally challenged and maybe with the domestic violence issues that are out there and you don't have to comment on any of my my questions right now since I have to leave but if you could answer to it in the future
I will just answer real quickly the social services aspect is yes we do have a team that goes out it's part of our San Gabriel Valley care unit they will go out and meet with anybody that's suffering from homelessness mental health issues and along that lines it also sometimes crosses over into domestic violence so we just need to know about it and then we can send the team out there depending on the nature of the the call we may or may not need to send a police officer so if anybody has any questions please feel free to get me offline
I have a comment to make this is regards the press conference we had last week or a week a week and a half ago and the first thing I wanted to say is I my family and I are very thankful to Chief Riddle excuse me Chief Riddle Chief Solinsky and the city council because I know this project did not happen overnight it was many years that took to get it going and it took a special vision Chief Solinsky and his team as Lieutenant Abdullah and Ted Garber they left no stone unturned to answer every single question regards this project and in the personal level my wife and I are so thankful for your vision because the air we breathe is precious and you made it cleaner and better and you made a big difference and also I want to thank council member Braun because without the approval of city council and council member Braun that actually soldier on with this particular issue it wouldn't have happened so I am very thankful to all of you thank you so much thank you we know we know he was but but you see it takes more than one council member and without the rest of you it would not have happened and you open your minds and your heart for the residents and you made it happen thank you
yes I do have I have few comments about preventative measures you know we discussed about what happens how and why we cannot prosecute those misdemeanors when I talk with neighbors how can we improve our public safety there's some some of the comment I would throw it here I'm new in the on the commissioner so maybe you already discussed I just want to put the idea here okay first we would like to for more technology pieces for example people are speeding on the street it's not safe and sometimes this happens midnight or early in the morning people just see the zooming sound how can we solve it maybe there's a kind of surveillance camera can detect speed and 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 charge the and give the ticket that's something speed ticket also some particularly for some streets like Grand Columbia that's what I guess complaining for if we can find some technology pieces without put too much burden on our staffing that will be very very helpful the second piece is about people like neighborhood watch how can we move it forward how can do more there are some digital technology software pieces software application of phone like a ring or next door ring neighbor next door you can instantly get message from a neighbor oh my backyard stranger please lock down just pay attention to your guest house or backyard garage that's very very helpful maybe we can incorporate some of the software pieces into our neighborhood watch program we can educate our neighbors they can do more yeah I think I have lots of but mainly it's the two pieces I think maybe I can get some feedback now or later how technology can help us improve our public safety thank you
I have one more thing and that is if you've been reading the newspapers and watching the news and you see how so many properties even close to us like in Pasadena and I'm talking about also San Fernando Valley and all that they've been robbed three four and five times consecutively and and you know this area is a very tempting area is the houses look beautiful people assume that we're all very wealthy which is not so not necessarily so for every case for every household but it's tempting so I watch the how technologically advanced these people are getting that they are putting cameras in front of the homes so they can watch find out when these people go when there's no one at home and also how what can we do to protect ourselves And also, how, what can we do to protect ourselves? Commissioner Lou just brought up a very valid subject. We do need to get the mobilize the community and to act on something like this. We need more people that would be the eyes and ears for the police department. We need to have more Neighborhood Watch groups. And but I I think this is something that as a public safety commissioner, I it is still, I do not feel safe. I feel safer that I would be living in other places. Trust me, this is much better. I can still walk around the park and and the policeman would just drive by and wave and I way back. Trust me, that that that's a great feeling. However, we don't know when a crew of three or four thugs are gonna come in your house and break the door and clean up the house of anything valuable. And and mostly they wreck and destroy whatever there is, looking for whatever they think is valuable. So I think we need to be more aware. This is giving us a lot of insecurity. We are talking crews that are flying in from South America, crews that fly in from Eastern European countries. And it's scary. It's scary to be in live in that environment. However, we have to be proactive and take more measures that would make us feel safer and that would make things better. Thank you.
I have one more point. When I talk with the business owners near the train station, she was cornered by homeless people from the station twice. She wants some more police patrol on the station, train station, or we can put a surveillance camera, the police officer can remotely monitor the the scenario around station. That's one of the input. I believe it's worth consideration. Thank you.
Any other comments? With no further items or comments from staff, I will now adjourn the meeting at nine forty eight A M at at our next regular meeting, Monday, September ninth, twenty twenty four, at eight thirty. Thank you.